...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, all.
Morning.
Morning.
I move we approve the agenda as amended by adding pointing Trish as FEMA representative for grain.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All for the amended agenda?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Motion to approve minutes from ten fifteen, two thousand eighteen, as printed.
We have a motion.
Oh, a second.
And a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Before the general public concerns, I was gonna, Sunday, or excuse me, Saturday night at church, they announced, uh, K. Cole Morgan had passed away. Um, January ninety-nine through December of two thousand and six, he served on the board, uh, for eight years. I guess I would like to, uh, the county, uh, give our condolences, not only for what he did here, but, I don't know how many years he served as a principal in our school, and give our condolences to the Cole Morgan family.
Yeah, good member of the community he was.
Yes, he was, and, uh, the wife and kids still live here, so, anyway, our deepest sympathy for the Cole Mogens, so...
Anyway, any about the services?
Yes, the visitation is, uh, don't quote me on the time, but Friday night, uh, at our church, and, uh, Saturday morning, I think is the, I can get you the time if you let me look at my phone later.
I can be there.
Anyway, um, we'll open it up this time for general public concerns.
We have someone here from the contractor for sub five.
Okay.
And just gonna try and update you a little bit on their projected schedule. I see their, I met your trucks, I think, pickups, two of them that came by the job. They were arriving at the job this morning about eight, so, um, you just kinda summarize things for where you're at?
Well, we're just getting started.
Yeah. Okay, well, you're at the beginning then, yeah.
They're flipping a coin whether or not you wanna dig a hole, and what?
What's that?
I say you're flipping a coin whether you wanna dig the hole.
The ride over this morning was good, and coffee was good.
Yeah, yeah, nobody had a flat tire. Uh, we're gonna start this morning on the apron. We're just gonna, I think that north end is, we're gonna try, so, surface-wise, it looks fine, but, uh, we'll see what it looks like ten, twelve foot deep. So, we're gonna start, do the best we can, uh, hopefully get across that gravel road here in the next week, week and a half, and then, once we get up farther south, though, we, we might just have to stop.
And drain some water out, huh?
Yeah, I, I don't know what we're getting into, none of us do, it's been a year from you know where, so, uh, we're just gonna do the best we can and, uh, see, we're not, we're not gonna fight it, uh, so, we'll just have to see.
I don't know if any of you've been out by there, there's four excavators and a print-in loader, a tractor backhoe, um, yeah, lots of good equipment right there, ready to go, so, and we have somebody coming down to help with the setting of the apron, to be sure it's set proper elevation and everything, so it started out right.
That'd be a really good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're confident that it handled it just fine, but, just getting the angle right and the, confirming that it's in where it should be as far as elevation and start, start right.
So, you said we're going across the road? Were we cutting, or?
Yeah, yeah, this is, uh, gravel.
Right.
Yeah.
How are we around there for farmers that are itching to?
No, they'll probably be all done by the time you get to the road.
Well, that's what I wondered, if...
Hopefully.
The water holes.
One's fifty-fifth, it's that half mile road.
Okay. Well, when we get to that point, I'm, it's kinda like your, uh, text the other day that they aren't, we're gonna be able to close Livermore, well, that's just more corn that's gonna go across that area before we have to close it, so, if it happens, it happens, so...
Hopefully winter holds off for a while.
Right.
We talked about...
Just a clarification for the public, sub five of what did?
Oh, D B eleven, sorry.
D B eleven, okay, and then who's the contractor?
Gerke Inc.
Gerke?
H, G?
G E H, R K E.
If he'd had his arm down, I was reading his...
Okay, and then the gentleman's name who's speaking?
Jeremy.
Jeremy Watts, A A S.
M?
A A S. Yeah, we had talked about maybe getting Prinsco involved, but, in talking to Jeremy, didn't feel that was really necessary, he had worked with us before, and, as you can see, they've got plenty of equipment to handle the job, but it was just trying to take care of any concerns that people had as far as when they were starting, how they were starting, that kinda thing.
Appreciate that, and Jeremy just said, get going and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Is that fair, Rick?
Yeah, we, we don't know.
You can't...
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm a pretty optimistic person, so, yeah, we're go...
Sure, but, you were pretty optimistic that it was gonna be physically done by the end of this year at the pre-construction.
Oh, yeah, we should've started a long time ago, but it's not clear, ain't it?
I know, you can't do it.
Yeah, those machines have pondered on.
Yeah, it's, it's getting my guys down in there, so, we're, we're not working underwater. So, it's just the way the year is, so, the completion time, worst case scenario, is if it's just totally not feasible, cost effective, to, I mean, we have to get rock trucks in there, there's a lot of things besides just laying the pipes, so...
Right.
I mean, if we can't get rock trucks in there, pipe trucks, then we can't, we can't go, so, we're just gonna have to see how far we get.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, hopefully it stays dry till about Christmas.
Yes.
But, uh...
That'd be great.
It's all like that, yeah. So, yeah, we're just, I don't really have...
I do have a question, but Rick, obviously, we've talked about it, and me and Jeremy's here, the intake situation and the connections, whether it be an intake or just a connection for future tiling in a field, you know, once you're going across, you have all the data, information, everything that you, Rick has talked to you about that?
Yeah, I faxed him a summary of T's and then intakes for locations, how, I'm, there might be a change today or tomorrow, yet another one or two to add, but, wanted to get the ninety-five percent of the order taken care of, so...
You good with that, Jeremy?
Right, now, we're just putting the T in, all right, we're not going into...
Yeah.
Correct.
There's like four or five intakes, yeah, but, most of them are T's.
Well, question is, and there is a couple landlords sitting right here, I can, I can ask you guys personally, it's all right, if you want an intake in one of your fields, would you have these guys install it?
That would be fine with me, I don't, as long as we've got a place to put one of that, so, it matters.
Right, right.
And I don't care if Jeremy wants to do it, that's fine with us, right?
So, I just wanna make, this was a really great, super great time to make sure everybody is on the same page.
The intakes being added are at the farmer's expense. The T's are at the county main's expense. Three or four locations that it's worth for the project to put in, the rest of them farmer's expense.
Yeah, okay.
Couple of road ditch ones that it would be very helpful, uh, one that's between two properties and who pays for it, that'll, to figure that out, so, those the district to take care of.
And, so, yeah, those, you already, in fact, you had those figured quite some time ago.
Yes, yes.
I just wanna make sure there's no confusion with the T hookup for either an intake or future tiling, as these guys go, that they have it, they know where it goes, we know that the district pays for the piece in the main tile line, anything past that is the farmer's, minus these four district intakes.
Yeah, yes.
What type of road ditch do you take, same talking?
Well, what I was thinking was, um...
Just a six inch?
I mean, hit twelve inch.
Okay, twelve inch is better than the, what, twenty-four, thirty that you got over in Weaver Township, but now it's got giant void around all of it.
Yeah, we're looking at twelve inch, all with fittings, uh, and then a, uh, rod type top line.
Yeah, I got a question, are these, they won't be plastic come up with, or?
Yes.
A little low.
But, the plastic could be flush with the ground and then a metal grade on top, yeah.
Okay.
Just for making all the connections and, and not having problems like...
It's a thicker plastic, isn't it?
Uh, no, it's just...
I thought it looked like they have a little thicker.
Might have to see what they've got out there, but it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so...
Hi, everything looks good?
Yeah, just, we're hoping any changes that people have or additions, we find out today or tomorrow, so we can get that...
They have the, the fittings, if you will, if, depending upon how far they get with the conditions, they have them to install.
Right.
When and where needed and/or requested.
Yes.
Okay. Is that it?
And it's on that one, I guess, you wanna, you're gonna do something later, right?
Yeah, we'd like to keep down here until the end of the meeting usually, but, we're gonna try to get in and out of here.
He's, where is he gonna, I was talking here in six minutes, so, thank you.
Oh, I missed that eight thirty-five window, but...
Don't say too much, you're way ahead of the game comparatively.
Uh, today's agenda, I've got two applications to work in the right-of-way, and both of these are basically at the same location, um, north of the radio station on the city side, Mark Becking put in a new bin, and this is basically, uh, a trenching that McPeek already did with Auto Remit and Mid-American to run the line in that boring casing that they did, so, um, I talked to Kevin McPeek last Thursday, I think it is, and, uh, he was under the assumption that the property owner had gotten the permit with the building permit for the bin, and the property owner was under the assumption that the guy doing the work would get the permit, so, I think it's confusion between the two of them.
I thought you don't wanna work off assumptions.
Yeah, yep, so, I talked to Kevin and, uh, he assured me that he's more than four feet deep, so it shouldn't be a problem with underground electrical, um, and I was talking to Mid-American, and they're comfortable with what they have to come in and do too, so...
All right.
I'll make, is that separate? So, I'll make a motion to approve that one that we just discussed, the boring that's already been done, so, get that taken care of.
We have a motion to approve the application for the trenching from McPeek on Montana Avenue.
Oh, second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Motion to approve, Mid-American, same location.
We have a motion now for Mid-American. And a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Uh, like I let you guys know, on Friday, plan was to move in and start replacing that bridge west of Livermore, uh, by five or five-thirty Friday, plans changed with them, and they were moving to Wright County to do a small culvert there that they expected would take, uh, sometime between a week and a half and two and a half weeks, before they move back over here, um, so, I guess, things with that are, are fluid even for them, I mean, it's been constant where they've, I think it's the third or fourth time that they've come in and said, we're planning on moving in, and then, plans change, or we get four inches of water and, you know, the, the creek goes up high, and...
And they got four inches of water wherever they were.
Yep.
Still approximate of a couple weeks?
For construction?
Is that what they told you?
Yeah, I mean, they're, my guess is, you know, uh, three, four days for removal.
No, may, when they started, is it, you mentioned it's still...
As soon as they get started, yeah, it's probably three weeks.
Right, but, no, to get there.
Oh, to get there, yeah.
Was it still the approximate, approximate, I say very approximate?
Yep.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Well, if good harvesting, a lot of the crop will be out, hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
We have a good two weeks, there won't be much harvested grain that needs to go that direction.
Right.
In two weeks.
And hopefully, uh, they can get in here and, and we have decent weather in the future, so...
This, yeah, what's decent weather, you, you don't, I mean, nobody knows, but, you're still thinking about getting coating, the...
If we had decent weather and we still got temperatures, they'll end up pouring the concrete over the top, too.
Yeah.
If not, it'll be spring.
Yep.
They'll just cover it with rock for...
For the winter.
For the winter.
Gotta get there first and then see what it looks like when they get to that point.
Yep, yep, uh, the one north of Hardy, they are backfilling right now, uh, we did run into the old concrete culvert that was supposed to be torn out in sixty-one, that wasn't, uh, so, we might have something of an extra on that project, um, I got pictures on my phone.
There's an old concrete one, that they just kinda cracked off?
There was, there was a five-foot diameter concrete pipe that ran under the road that in sixty-one, they were supposed to tear out and put this steel tube in, so, sixty years later, we're replacing the steel tube and we found the sixty-inch concrete that was supposed to be removed, so, we'll find it quite often.
Where was the, the old concrete one in?
Just north.
It was there.
About ten feet north of it, so, we found it when we were excavating.
Was it pretty well?
So, we're gonna tear it out.
Was it pretty well?
That's...
You couldn't have seen it till you started digging, type thing?
Yeah, it was only, it's only thirty foot wide, it was, basically, they used a steel sign on either end to, to cap it, more or less, and, yeah...
Okay.
Were we, the water dropped quite a bit up there then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been able to pump it, they've got two pumps there running right now, and, and they're staying ahead of it.
Good.
So...
Awesome.
They've got, uh, most of the barrel section set there, at the point where they'll be setting the bins and then the end sections, moving on for that.
I saw that they've been moved, my last time up, jacking around, they've been moved, so...
Yeah.
I have a question on this, uh, Mark Marielville.
Okay.
Is that, uh, is that for like flood washouts that were still, uh...
Uh, some, but they haven't claimed, uh, FEMA hasn't claimed this most recent one as a disaster.
That's what I wondered, but we'll be able to, if they do?
If they do, we've been running day labor reports for that, um...
Cause it's like six thousand, cause we're done with rock, right?
Yeah, yeah, right now, we've basically, for the past two, three weeks, we've spot-loaded a couple lubs of rock in where you start to see mud pumping up through the road to try and save it, uh, as well as putting it down on the road where the high water washed it out, so...
I wondered.
Yeah, I think, uh, thirty-five hundred or four thousand of that is probably reclaimable if we get declared again for this event. Uh, we did meet with FEMA last week, which kicks off the sixty days that we've gotta get every, everything turned into them, Sue's got a majority of it already completed, uh, I have to go around and get a hundred and twenty GPS locations from where they were all at, so...
Just up there on, off of Laverne Blacktop there, that one day it looks like it's going down, and the next day it's back up and running deeper than it was coming across the road up there on that...
Yeah, we can thank Sioux County for that one, everything that they get flows right through there.
Right, so, I'm just curious on that, if that was gonna be reclaimable, hopefully, for, I see some...
And, and some of it, some of it was chips, which is our, uh, uh, sand and ice control.
Standing and stuff.
Yep.
Hopefully, if they'll let us put that on there, we could...
Yeah, the, the, the chips are actually cheaper than the sand anymore.
Yeah. Okay.
Then, you know, when they get done with the, what you just talked about, north of Hardy, what their next?
Uh, I'm not sure if they're gonna go south of Thor, or if they're gonna go over to Weaver Township where the dry box is, I suppose it depends on...
The weather.
The weather, forecast, um, if there's no rain coming in the ten-day, I'd see them probably going to, to Weaver and doing the dry one, just to allow a little bit more time for the water to go down over by Thor, so... But, uh, Dave was running up there when I came here to talk to them.
Well, that one south of Thor is, that's, man, is that gonna be closed?
Yes.
Well, how else are they gonna get Eagle Grove, only down on one sixty-nine, to Badger then?
Uh...
Cause that's all the traffic comes through Thor.
The, the official Highway seventeen detours and them east...
Over through Holmes, north of, south of Holmes.
And then, yeah, east of, uh, Eagle Grove to the nearest Blacktop, and so...
Well, I can go down to Badger, but anybody that's coming from the north that doesn't know that, they're gonna come down to the Thor Blacktop, come all the way across, and...
And then run all the way over to Badger, or...
Take gravel.
Or take gravel, you know?
Almost in the corner of the snow, just to get some of these roads opened up again, but, man...
Yeah, this is an unfortunate year, I mean, all four of our box culverts are unpaid roads, I mean, that's not normally the case, but...
And then they have all the other construction on the highways.
Right.
At the same time.
Yeah, but, between our projects and the DOT's projects, we've had quite a bit going on around here lately.
But I did see with a picture of Highway three is toward the bridge.
Yes.
The deck.
Yep, uh, I stopped Friday and took a couple pictures from the road closed, barricaded and...
So, we still have to do the approach then?
They've got, uh, the approach left to do, they've got the side rails left to do, they'll have guard rail on the ends to do, and then, probably some minor grading, maybe throwing some seed down.
So, what then, you waiting for?
We're getting used to that detour through Dakota State anyway.
Right, yeah, um...
All right, Dave?
Uh, I, I would say three, four weeks for everything, I mean, the, the concrete deck needs a week before you can strip the forms underneath it at the earliest, and then, uh, uh, they can get on it with the cement trucks and pour the rails on either side after that, so, they're probably, I mean, this week, they'll probably be forming, they'll be forming the, the rails up, and then, they can drop the forms and pour the rail, so... Uh, the only other thing that I didn't have on the agenda was to talk to you guys about hiring, uh, temporary, part-time, got a couple of retired county employees that we've hired in the past, uh, I've talked to one of them, he's interested in coming back again, um, the only thing that I'd be looking at is, uh, give them a bump in pay, we didn't bump them last year, uh, so, it'd be like a buck, an extra buck an hour, is what it amounts to.
Snow removal.
Snow removal.
Help, extra help.
Yeah, uh, in the past, we've hired Mick Hatcher and Roger Gosner to come back, I haven't talked to Roger yet, but Mick's open to coming back, uh, for a bladerout over in Corns Township, um...
As a bonded man, you know after you aren't paying anything, right?
What's that?
Just as needed.
That's an as needed, yeah, yep.
Yeah. Keep your train of other people.
I think last year, they only got forty hours each, you know, but they're damn handy to have.
Yeah.
When they build their way around to our equipment.
I was gonna say, they've been around, they know the equipment, and they, we don't have to worry about our two-hundred-thousand-dollar motor patrol.
Right.
Not that something couldn't happen, but they've also been around it long enough.
Yeah, and they were, they were both full-time blade operators at one point for the county, so...
Heard that on the radio, the DOT's looking for people, too.
Yeah, always, they're calling them snow fighters, I think I heard on the radio, so...
I'm hoping that our moisture all came in water.
Yeah.
This summer, and we just have a nice chilly.
Well, that's, well, they're talking, we're gonna go warmer than normal winter now.
Well, I'm good with that, too.
That'd be all right.
So, it might be rain all in the back.
Well, get with Peggy on putting that on the agenda for those guys.
Okay, send word when you know their next box culvert, there you go.
Yep, I'll let you guys know, uh, how these guys are progressing, like, right now, we're backfilling, uh, we've been hauling them, we've been hauling them rock for the center thirty-foot for the travel portion of the road, um, so you will see rock bells coming in that's associated with that, um, I believe, and it has moved to dirt outside, but...
Are we, have you heard anything on their truck, I suppose they're gonna wait for it, for snow, and then call and say, oh, you can come and get them now, but...
They'll deliver them.
Oh, they will deliver?
They will deliver them, I talked to the salesman last week, he said they've got the first one in the, in the shop right now, and basically, they, they fabricate all the pieces that they need for that first one, and then, once they find, you know, which pieces they need, uh, special fabricated, they basically, they just make three of them, so, they said the first truck takes longer than, than the other two combined, so, but he's still thinking, uh, end of the month, towards middle of next month, they'll have them delivered.
Perfect.
Should work.
All right.
Right.
Appreciate it very much, thank you. Okay, um, do you wanna do the, are we gonna do the drainage appointment, or are we gonna do that in, in drainage?
No, that needs to be done in regular session.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna make a motion for that appointment of Trish, the county FEMA representative?
I'll make the motion to appoint Trish Elliott as our county representative for FEMA.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
For drainage, right?
For drainage.
For drainage.
For drainage. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, she now has that position, um...
I'm gonna do claims.
We could do the claims, did anyone look those over?
The only one I had, EMA down there spent three hundred and thirty-some dollars for IV, have a training session or something?
I think it was water that she got.
Three hundred and thirty-some dollars for?
Well, a lot of water.
That's a lot of water. Well, it could be because they was grassing out at Hardy and a couple other towns, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
No more, or pioneer, not, and they're bragging.
Bragging.
Yeah. Well, I get a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for general, a hundred and forty-one thousand, one twenty-six and twenty cents for drainage.
That's what I get, I'm saying to motion.
I had twenty-one, but you are correct, it's twenty-six. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims, um, those numbers, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, speeding right along here, set the date and time for the eighteen nineteen county budget amendment, I wanna fill in that, Peggy.
We're looking at, uh, November fifth at eight thirty-five, day before the election.
I was gonna say, you have to put that right in there, and that makes...
Might as well, you know?
Can you, uh, what's, a little extra information on that?
It's mainly secondary roads that needs the budget amendment, but I'm gonna throw in a budget amendment for the law library, cause we hadn't planned on buying any books, and now we've got the twenty-two thousand dollars for the book, so we didn't put any money in there for it, so before we get the bill, we probably better allocate some money.
Well, that, I got something there for you, too, so if there's anything extracurricular, will that timeframe take care of it then, if you're aware?
Um, you mean as far as the budget amendment?
If there's any other things that...
No, this is it, cause I sent a note out to all department heads, and everybody said they were fine, so, or didn't respond at all, so, all in secondary roads and the law library, that's it.
Okay, but, I mean, so, it would, yeah, this should be it then, basically.
For this time, mhm.
I believe the time and date for the budget amendment to be November fifth at eight thirty-five.
Uh, second that.
We have a motion and a second for that time at eight thirty-five on the fifth, all in, uh, in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Eight thirty-five it is.
Resolution?
Resolution.
Public purpose for precinct?
Um, I put this on there. Some counties do this. We have training for election officials, and we're required to have them here, um, every time we have an election. And it's usually a long period of time, an hour and a half, sometimes two hours. Whenever I brought treats in the past, I've usually purchased it myself, and it's like, why am I doing this? It's something, it's, but it has to be designated as a public purpose for me to be able to have the county. It wouldn't be much, um, possibly cookies, possibly water. There's something to snack on while they're listening to the, the training sessions.
Yeah.
It probably wouldn't be every election. I know some elections have a lot more people than they do others.
I was gonna say, so roughly a dozen, twenty-five, what do you?
We're talking thirty people, in a general, yeah.
It's a lot of cookies that you go buy.
What else you got going on in your day?
It's here light on here a lot, baking cookies.
This just came to light because somebody else had asked, said they were gonna have their board approve it, and did anybody have a copy of a resolution? And I thought, well, then why am I buying cookies?
There you go.
Everybody else is doing this, or why am I cooking and...
But think of the smell you could have if you had an oven in your office there.
I know.
We'd hang around more.
We have enough people that hang around.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for public purpose for precinct election official training and resolution twenty eighteen dash nineteen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Excuse me. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you very much.
I still think the oven would be a lot nicer.
I don't, maybe I'll buy one of those candles that smells like cookies.
That might be better, then we'd have to requisition an oven, and Peggy doesn't have time to do any more stuff. Yeah, there you go.
Microwave cookies.
Take you forty minutes to cook one cookie.
Do you wanna do the claims, and then you're outta here before we go to drainage, or?
Did the claims.
Or not, I meant the committee reports.
We could.
Then you don't have to come back?
It's only up to you guys.
Well, I'm working out for you there.
Drainage gets windy.
Yeah.
Even on the hook short.
The only report I have to give, I had a daycare meeting on Tuesday of last week, and everything's running smooth. They got fifty-six kids enrolled right now. We got employees for every room ahead of employ. We could always use more backups for those people in the major rooms. But going at it for objective, we think it will keep picking up numbers. A lot of the people are still satisfied with their current base head providers, and they haven't moved over yet, but it'd be forthcoming.
So what, fifty-six, and what, what's the license for?
Hundred and seven.
So we're about half.
And they're full in some areas, for an infant room, full. So they have to do some shifting around to get more infants. That's if everything fits in exactly perfectly, you get a hundred and seven.
Well, that's good news.
Is Alyssa still helping out there, or she done?
She's done.
Good.
She backs up once in a while, but unless somebody called and said she didn't have to go out there anymore.
Great.
That's probably good for her.
Yes, I think it is.
Oh, you had?
That's it.
I didn't have nothing official. Just weeks.
No, nothing, no extracurricular meetings this past week.
I had the landfill meeting down in Fort Dodge. Probably the biggest topic was, um, they're starting to open up a new, uh, cell, and we had all the rain and knife crappy weather. We had Rash who was doing the dirt work and stuff is behind, and we've given them an extension, and they still don't think they'll make it. And it's kinda one of these projects, once you start it, you gotta get it done before the ground freezes, otherwise they make you redo it in the spring. So they're gonna come back with, uh, whether they're gonna attempt to get it done this fall or not next, so.
They're gonna make us put a liner in it?
Yeah, that's the thing. They gotta pass down two feet of clay, put a liner, and put two feet of sand over it. And if you don't get it done, you gotta redo it for a freeze-staw cycle.
So they don't?
You don't wanna get partway through and get those out, so, and they don't, we don't need it for, we don't even need it next year, so we're fine for time-wise.
They may just wait till next year to do it.
But the contract says they're supposed to be done by first of December, I believe.
What date was that meeting, right?
That was on Tuesday night at five-thirty. And some employee issues down there, just gotta get some, some people are retiring, just switching jobs. That's about all I have.
Okay. I had, um, Wednesday the seventeenth, I had ministerial meeting. Still having that at the Methodist Church because of the hospital. We've usually had it at the hospital, but with their remodeling, they've kinda lost some of their meeting space, but some of the things that they've got going on are, Edno is continuing to run the food pantry. Uh, they've raised the fee that they're paying them because of the amount of hours that it's taken. The numbers are just rising almost every month for, so it's doing what they wanted. They're getting more people, more food distributed, so that's a good thing. They have, the food pantry truck is coming tomorrow. I think it's scheduled at ten-ish, uh, the twenty-third. Right now, the mobile, uh, food pantry will be the fourteenth at, uh, four-thirty down Fairgrounds. Edno's kicked off the coats for kids. Uh, I think they said they had fifty-three requests already. And they also have their Christmas, uh, ox distribution, and most of that is run through your local churches, so if you're interested in doing that, you have the ability to get a miss or adopt a family and, and, uh, do that. They're also doing the, uh, running of the food pantry on Mondays and Thursdays. They're trying to coordinate that through the churches, similar to the way they do the Meals on Wheels before. The church would take it for the full month, so, um, they're leaning on the churches for their help. So I think those are all the things that I told them I tried to get out, so that was it for me.
Farthing Portugal, this has nothing to do with last week, but any of you would like to go to Fertile, Iowa Wednesday, we have a community service meeting. And it appears, you know, we had a discussion here about maybe having to drop out or redesign our district. On the agenda here, it says withdrawal intent of Hansaw, Cassous, Winnebago, and Worth. Well, Saragoga's kinda changed their mind, so we're gonna be all right. So Saragoga was contiguous with Wright County, so Wright, Pocahontas, Webster, Humboldt, will still be all right.
Well, that's good news.
All depending on what Saragoga did, so if this goes through tomorrow, we'll be all right.
And you're headed towards the big city of Fertile?
You bet. Won't miss it.
Well, that's good.
You guys are welcome to go along if you like.
Also, Wednesday, they're gonna have the ribbon cutting, I believe it is, for the, uh, new bus barn.
You know what I have? That wrote down.
Five o'clock, I think. I just heard it on Mr. Disc Radio's announcement this morning.
I've had four. What time did you say?
Well, they're gonna have the meeting at four, so it'll be the ribbon cutting, I think, is gonna be at five. That's on Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
It'll be in the paper and the radio. We're gonna start out with...
You might reaffirm your meeting with Peggy on the thirtieth. She's coming to Rotary Town about elections. You guys are still welcome to come on, Tuesday the thirtieth.
Well, that's right. You were buying a dinner steak dinner, wasn't it?
Well, I have a cheese sandwich anyway.
Well, as far as scheduling stuff, and you sent this out, Peggy, uh, update on the redoing the website was scheduled. Uh, I wanna make sure I got the right date. Can you tell us that again?
I did not write that down, Eric.
I did not either. I haven't.
After drainage, I'll come back.
Okay, just so we have that, because you have a definite time, at least for one of the, uh, I don't know.
Presentation.
Yeah.
Yep.
You're, and yeah, you sent that out. I think it's a, I think it's the twentieth.
That's what I'm thinking, but...
Well, just so we get that down, because it's always nice to see those things and, and ask the questions, and that isn't, you know, that's a time to do it.
Perfect.
Also wanted to remind the board, uh, remember the courthouse security books that I gave you? There's a page in there, the last page in it, that everybody was supposed to sign off on and give back to me. I've gotten all the employees back except for a couple of them, and I don't have any of yours, so I thought I would remind you I do need that page signed for our record.
Okay. When we go to break between, I'll sign mine and get it into you.
Not a problem.
Go into drainage.
Uh, before we do that. And while Peggy's still here, I think this is something, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna give this to Peggy. We have the total bill for our right-of-way weekly. So I'm just, got all this information that needs to be kept filed with the bill, so we have, they, you know, the company wants us to have record of what they did. They have record too.
They're very good about that.
Yeah, so I'll give you this, uh, that's, okay, I don't think we need to make, put this on an agenda or anything. It's just a bill.
They'll come to a claim.
I think it's one of the best moves we ever made, just hiring them.
It's really done well. Don has been, as he's been with the drainage ditch, uh, he said that that drainage ditch thing started before he started. The previous owner of the company, who's still a owner, but kind of a silent partner now, and is, he's older, that started many, many years ago, back in the probably late seventies, early eighties. That's how long they've been doing the brush control and the dredge.
Kinda when they went around and cleaned all the trees out.
One-third of the county every year.
Yep, and they, they've continued on that protocol for many, many years. He said that was actually before he started. He said, and I've been here a long time. So they're fantastic, Don in particular, to work with. This is broke down between the, uh, primarily giant ragweed that they did earlier, uh, and then thistle, so it's, it's all spelled out. And then I made myself a note. There was questioning on spraying the bottom of drainage ditches for weed control. So I wanted to, had a, when Don, he wanted, he went through this with me, we had that discussion after this. He said, he has done that, he can do that, but he said, I want everyone to be aware, that he said, there's places where that's cost-effective, depending upon what you're spraying. If you're spraying, uh, example of like cattails or something to that effect, he said it can be pretty effective, cause it, it gets rid of the vegetation and prevents siltation. But he said, if you see an island out there with bromgrass growing on it, he says, we can kill the bromgrass, but he said, if the island is out there, he said.
It stays there.
And the problem is, he said, if it's just a grass thing, he says, you probably, what it costs to keep that under control, he said, probably in five years' time, you are gonna spend the money in that section, that maybe just put it towards a clean out. He's done this, but he said he can do it, and he's more than willing, if we have a, a concern in an area, that they will look at it, and he'll tell us if it's, if it's cost-effective or not. So it is something that can be done. I know we talked about it, can we, he says, and sometimes, he says, it works really well, depends upon what you're trying to get rid of, but he said, we can do it, but he said, I discourage him from just, oh, you see some grass growing on a clump of dirt in the bottom there, he says, you might just not be getting much.
Now, probably spray is pretty expensive.
Yeah, and it did the time to do it. It's extra time materials, so that was my, um, story, and like I said, uh, if there's any questions on it, it's spelled out, looked down between, and every, on the, uh, thistle control, every mile of right-of-way was covered this year. Technically, from what we approved way back when, it did come in slightly under budget total. So I'll give this to Peggy, and that's the story on the weed control for this year, and if there's any questions, and Don will be here, as he always is, rear part of the year.
Cold snowy day.
Real cold snowy day, and, uh, he always talks about drainage ditch control. He will have some information on, uh, right-of-way control at the same time. So there you go. That's the weed control story.
Now go into drainage.
Motion?
Second.
And second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, carry it. Peggy, the visitation is four to seven on Friday. The funeral is ten thirty.
Right during homecoming.
I think it was way, way back when.
Oh, yeah. Okay, got it, thank you.
Friday night is, yep.
More than this. Right weed control, and so between the two, two minutes.
Also, the total is forty-three.
Forty-three, six hundred. Sure. That's, that's total weed control this.
Ten, you're gonna be late here.
And this is the estimate.
I know, I know.
I'm gonna fire you someday.
Well, I plan on this life.
I tried for nine years, I couldn't get fired.
What page is it? Sorry, there's about three thousand left.
In this book anyway.
Actually more, actually, actually a little additional control, and he'll, like, he'll come and talk to us before, we think about next year, but we kicked around some, some ideas on some of the extracurricular stuff like ragweeds to get.
Well, I know those spots that I told him, or told you to have him go look at over there, going, uh, back way into Eagle Grove, that they sprayed about three days later, it was like...
If they, if they knew where they were and they sprayed them, they got rid of them. So it was really, it was a really good program.
Ruth, you need some coffee?
I sure would. I got up early this morning. I went Valero open it. So I took my road form, thank you.
Kids, you need some coffee?
Yeah, I'll take a cup.
Do they have a, a poster thing that lets you know, back line us, that you can...
You know Jeff, he's here, bringing pictures.
Oh, he does.
He does update the...
Because I was wondering, like, on meeting, if you take off, you get down, and that, oh crap, oh my god.
Nathan, you're not a great quality, right?
No, no, no. Open at six o'clock, I figured in two and a half hours, I was still sitting there.
Yes, please, if you're pouring.
Very upset.
Did you make it too?
No.
Oh, okay, wow.
No, I made it today. I might've got a little black, I don't know. That was nice. Looks good. I was looking for the scooper, that was...
You're just guessing?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks, Carl.
I got my signature done, so I'm not in Peggy's doghouse.
I didn't get the memo. Yeah, I signed it when we got the board.
Yeah, I thought we spoke to Keenan.
Yeah.
All I heard is they were still left this way to the courthouse, you know. I brought it back.
And I signed it.
No.
Get that, that's the technicality I could take care of.
That's funny. You're going?
Yeah.
You're gonna be down there at eight, tailgate?
I doubt it.
If my roommate, he always sends me texts, Bloody Marys at eight o'clock, it's like...
You're going to home, are you? Rick, you going down Saturday?
No, is it mine?
That'll be for...
This is turning point, we need three more.
Yes, I think we can do it.
Well, Ohio State guy took it on those. I'm shocked.
I didn't really, couldn't say, did it upset me?
No, neither.
Of course, you know, I had to throw a little fuel in the fire about Purdue fans jumping over the fence and rushing.
They get fined?
Haven't heard of that.
I haven't heard Purdue got fined.
Ten on the thing, what, what they're, every conference has a different binding schedule.
Harvick Bowl beat, was, uh, wasn't he in Iowa for KD for a long time?
Yeah, that's when you got fined.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
That shouldn't have been on TV.
Okay. We have a DD one-seven-one approved claim for repair.
This is coming from Pocahontas. It was along the north branch of Lizard Creek. And the ditch bay south of the driveway was falling in. They hauled five loads of dirt to fill the washout, and it was a FEMA. We just have to approve the work order and...
Fifty fifty? With Pocahontas County?
I doubt it.
It's not fifty fifty, but it's joint way, um, we have a small portion of it, really. And the claim is eight hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Our portion?
No, total.
It's not very much.
Oh goodness.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do that one quick, order changes.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the DD one seven one, our portion of our claim for that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion period.
Down there on the Pilot Creek Road or whatever they call that.
They have a map here.
That works out.
I think.
The next year where five hundred and fiftieth street is.
Five hundred and fiftieth would be, uh, would be south of Gilmore City.
Yeah. It looks like here's the dividing line, here's some, but it goes clear up to kind of the Pilot Creek area, I think is where, no, we cross over.
Was three twentieth?
Be three mile, four miles south of Gilmore City. Almost down to Pioneer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's over and down there, south of there.
Yeah, Street Pioneer Block Top, I think.
Okay.
I don't know the number.
Well, we'll go with it. What else you got, Rick?
Um, just gonna update you on DD thirty-five Ranch C. Concerned by everyone, the contractor, missing some good days here working. They got caught on a job, sanitary sewer job with four hundred feet of pipe that they had to put in standpoints and everything. They're loading people up on that job to try and get it so they can come back here and stay. Not much we can do to force them to come back in. From what I, they had told me here a few days ago, the latest it would be when they're back is a week from today. So we're hoping the weather.
They're not doing, doing anything at all right now?
Not right now.
They took them all, huh?
Yeah, yep. Got a call from Harlan Schultz this morning, there's a pipe blocking his driveway that he needs access to field, one hundred and ninetieth, first gravel road they're coming to. I got our Jason Vin Dixon working on getting someone here from the contractor to move those pipe. Harlan hopes to be combining in that field this afternoon. So I'll call Jason when I get out of here to see what's going on there.
Well, knowing Harlan, if they could get it moved, it wouldn't take him long to get it done so that, and I'm sure he'd do it in the area so that it would be workable for him. That's the way Harlan would be.
Yeah, that's what he, yeah, that's what he wants to see, so.
I just, and I'm, I know I've sent you several texts because I've been driving by and when I see that machine sitting there on beautiful sunny days and I'm thinking, you know, um, we've had ups and downs with this and there's really nothing we can do other than the fact that remember back, we had four, five, six days of sun and what we've been through.
If somebody had sewer back up in the basement, that probably had a higher priority.
I'm sure it has a higher priority.
Yeah, that's, that's probably exactly what happened. But, yeah, I, we'll just stay in touch with them and we'll have people here. You've heard they're starting on sub five of eleven today. Our guys within twenty minutes are probably being on site, get that apron right, get the first piece of pipe in, be sure they're headed the right direction, have the right flow line. It's all state, so it should be obvious, but we like to actually use our GPS and once they set that apron and feel they have it, we get our guy down there and he checked the actual flow line on the apron.
That's a really good idea.
It is, so.
Because we don't wanna.
And also prevention.
Oh, man, if that's wrong, you're doomed.
Yeah, exactly.
That project is doomed.
Yeah, but on that's, yeah, we're gonna keep a close eye on that one in particular being the plastic in wet conditions.
It's the first one.
I think that's.
Just the whole, that whole project in general.
Yes, yes. Well, that, I think that's part of the reason they have four excavators there in case they need to do any extra holding of pipe, you know, while they're back down.
Those are twenty foot thick?
Typically twenty foot, they can make them in twelve, I guess, but typically twenty.
Saw them, when do they, have they started putting any of them on the ground out there? Or just wait until they get the apron and stuff done?
Well, they've got pipe out there, I think.
Was, but I wondered.
Um, yeah, they've got a few pipe out there.
Way blew the other day, they probably rolled them out of the field.
I, I wondered about that myself, because, yeah, those will move, even the large ones, they'll roll like crazy, so. I'm gonna stop out there before I leave the county today, see how it's going with the apron, see if our guys checked it. Yeah, and we'll have somebody down there, so. Just for your information, I got a call from Jim Hudson the other day, a landowner on DD six had been in, objecting to the last adjustment that was made for the wet areas. Wondering what he could do about that. And Hudson asked him if he'd objected officially to the, to this and the timeframe. You have to file an objection to the reclass and then within thirty days after it being finalized, you have to take it to court. Missed, he didn't do any of that, so Hudson told him, time has passed, basically has to live with it. So, your decisions and we've been doing the right thing, you have the right to adjust those. They can appeal it then, but he didn't. So you have the right at the hearing to make the adjustments that you see fit. And that just reiterates that fact, that you have that right.
That's why there's so much protocol on all this, there's always time, ti- timing, time, set this, do that.
Yep.
Which is why it takes forever.
It does take.
Yeah, it does, some of them in particular, so. But I just thought, just to reinforce you've done that right and things are fine. There's a question on DD thirty-five Ranch C coming to the gravel road. There's a covert under that road and the question was, how close are we to that with our new pipe? We've got like seventeen feet of clearance from outside of our new pipe to the outside of the structure that's there. Ben says that should work out fine, I talked to him about it this morning. There's no plans to replace that box anytime soon, no plans at all, he said it's in good shape, working fine.
And with the intake on the north side of the road, that should help.
That's right, that's right, it'll take some pressure off of that pipe, significant pressure off that pipe.
Well, hopefully it'll cut the water flow, the surface water that.
Yes.
And keep that thing somewhat clean because that carries a lot of dirt.
Yes, yes.
When it's flowing, it has.
We've reviewed that structure with the contractor and the intent is that the concrete riser, and we're gonna give them directions on what level to cut it off at so that we get it absolutely where we want it, yeah.
Good.
So that should help.
And that was the one that was added in?
Yes, yeah.
Was on original?
Right, correct. I did review the ones we were looking at in the right of way for sub five also with Ben this morning. Doesn't have a problem, just doesn't like the really big ones in the road ditches, but I don't know what.
Would you come up with two foot?
Well, I, I think we actually have three footer there, I'd have to look.
But the thing of it is, it's the needed area, when there's water, there's water.
Oh, lots of it, yeah.
And if you're trying to get it into the tile system.
Yep.
It can hardly be big enough.
That's right, that's right, and we've went over with the contractor, the type of grate. We've been using welded rebar grates, that way we can set the openings the size we want them. And we've been going with six inch openings so that the small stuff just goes right on through, but the big stuff will collect, you have to clear it off once in a while, so.
Well, just FYI, this is with Virgil Williams yesterday, a minute, out there, he said that one intake that must be north and east of his own place. I'm thinking that's the one.
Mm-hmm.
He said that thing really takes water. And he says, I mean, it always had water all, following out there. He said it really works well and he said that for, just for what it's worth, it was.
Was that on thirty?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah.
Thirty-three.
That's where we can.
It, it might be a, uh, it's like one of those where it sits up out of the ground with the cement lid, manhole in the center. And then there's a grate, probably six, eight inch opening all the way around.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, okay.
It's big.
It's big, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably six by six or eight by eight box.
Oh, at least six by six, yeah, it's a big one.
Yeah, those will, it's amazing, so.
He just, just so you know, it really takes water.
Well, I think that's a good point though to the, if it is a thirty inch diameter in the ditch, it's there for that, I mean, it has to take the water. It's, there's no sense in putting in a twelve inch.
No, no.
It's just gonna, it's just gonna run over the top of it.
That's right, and we're doing the intake at the next road north too. And both of those will help get the surface water into the pipe.
Right.
And that'll be the fast runoff, that won't have much effect on the tile drainage. That's taking care of the surface drainage so the tile drainage can work better.
Right, oh yeah, get rid of the question.
Exactly, exactly. That's all I can think of.
Um, I had one question on, uh, that bulkhead that Gary Jensen repairing, have we, I haven't heard anything on that.
It's done.
Is it done?
Oh, okay.
I haven't been out there.
The landowners said it's done.
Well, good, I was just, I hadn't seen it run into Gary.
Yeah, I hadn't heard anything.
I hadn't seen a bill come in, so I didn't know if they got it done or I knew that they had been working on it.
Yeah, I think the landowners said it was done.
Perfect.
Yeah, I hadn't been out there, I hadn't heard anything, so.
Did you guys get the email that, about, uh?
Thirty-five?
Yes, yeah. The one about dumping the water into the quarry?
Yeah.
Is that the one you're alluding to? Because I printed it, so I didn't forget, I just thought we should bring that up for discussion, well, especially beans Rick's here.
Ron Collins had just mentioned that when we talking a couple weeks ago about that ditch and I think, I don't know how many years ago, they put that little barrier retaining wall up there on the, as it goes by the cemetery, if you drive up that.
Oh, yeah.
Road, there's a little wall that they kept because the water was going in there.
Water worked its way through.
So, I think they put a barrier up there so that the water couldn't get into the quarry and, and when he mentioned that, I said, well, you have to reconfigure that and I don't know. Would you have to go to the state?
That's what you want, the water to go into the quarry.
As a retaining.
Just use, they put a, put a exit down below and it'll have, basically have the water go through the quarry and use it as a filter to re-ariate, for lack of a better term. Re-ariate the pond because there's a lot of people that fish that quarry. He just thought it'd take some of the pressure off of that down below.
Well, I give it a place for it to go.
Yeah.
Who owns that quarry now?
Uh, I think it's that group, Jim Grunberg and.
Brony, isn't it?
Yeah.
He's got the front one now, he's got the back one too.
So, I don't.
Is that, is that even something that you can decently?
It takes the surge off, it's usually helpful, you can do something like that. This one's already there, it's a natural holding area.
Right, but like Bruce said, they, might have it, sort of, you said there's kind of dyked off a little bit.
Well, it has, if you just go up there to the east side of the cemetery and drive up that gravel, or up that road there. You'll see this up toward the northwest corner of the quarry and they've got a little retaining wall that, I don't know, probably a couple of feet, that they pour, keep the water.
Oh, it's actually poured concrete?
It looks like it's poured.
Two thousand and ten or eleven, it washed out real bad in there and like, everything was coming out of the ditch, or out of the quarry.
Well, at one time, weren't they pumping, did they have an irrigation system on that quarry and pumping over to, um.
The yard.
The yards and sand, or over on his field there, west of the quarry.
Come right off that corner.
Yeah, so they were pulling water out and then I think, I don't know how much of the spring that, it's got an active spring there that keeps it filled. I can't remember ever, it's always been water since I, I don't remember when they mined it. I don't know how deep that quarry is, but would you have to go to the DNR to ask permission to do something like that?
Imagine that's a private quarry and it has nothing to do with natural waterways, right, the DNR probably is not involved.
That's right, I would, my first impression is they would not have to be in.
Well, like, big question, is it even worth pursuing, is that, is it?
Yeah, is it a benefit to the district?
District, is it, or, or if you start, how do you control what you're diverting into it, or is it gonna, you know?
The other thing is, is at what elevation you put the outlet, because you're gonna put an outlet down towards the road. Where the water's gonna come in and then when it reaches so high on the other end, it's a natural overflow.
Yeah, I was gonna say, otherwise, there's time, and this year would have been one of them, it could have flooded it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd really have to take a serious look at the outlet and how you designed that.
And how I they want it.
It's very doable, I mean, there's computer programs even to help you with how, how much depth increase there would be and all that kind of thing.
Be the time of the time to consider that, wouldn't it, I mean, well, or.
Yeah, um, and I guess.
What would be the added volume of water coming from up that direction if?
We just look at acres and rainfall.
Or I understand, what I'm saying.
Well, we're really not adding volume, we're just getting it there faster.
Right.
True, yeah. It was the same acres, we didn't pick up any.
Yeah, we didn't have any acres, we just.
No.
And we were across the one pipe, so actually you might speed up the rate that it's coming.
Yeah. It's worth thinking about and pursuing, I mean, it's a matter of who does the work, how's it paid for, um.
Rick, I'm the guy that sits in my backyard and watches the river go by and wonder how many million gallons goes by in a half hour. It's been, it's been hot all summer and I think, gotta be somebody that's smarter than I am that could calculate the distance, the height, and how many jillion gallons is flowing through Humble County.
Who needs to know?
I don't need to know, but it's.
You need to get a different hobby.
And yesterday I was out picking up, chasing leaves, but.
There you go.
You live next to the country club and you get a northwest sun, you get a lot of winds and you get a lot of leaves, it's quite a fun.
You get leaf rust, probably, yeah.
And then one side across the street, Jim has one tree in his front yard and his leaves are like a foot and a half deep, it's like, sorry, get in there, I'm fine either.
When you try to burn them, you get a lot of smoke too.
Oh my goodness, so, anyway, I just, I thought Martin called and said he'd done a tree, but it's gonna be an option.
If the, and it alludes to the, you know, keep the level, obviously, of the quarry because it's docked with fish and stuff and. If it isn't, you know, a big fiasco to accomplish it, one thing though I will say, this does not negate what we talked about, getting the further downstream through town cleaned out. This is gonna take the place of that.
It may help the surge a little bit, but you still have the issues.
We still need to keep moving forward with that.
Yeah, that needs to be cleaned and maintained.
Yeah, word, yes.
Sometimes if it dries, um, it has dried a lot, um, we need to grab a couple of them and go for a walk.
Yeah, that was a follow note I had to myself.
That doesn't, this doesn't.
Hopefully get the leaves off and then.
No.
Right, well, if nothing else, we could fly it and walk it too, might be able to see a little better in there.
Yep.
Well, you know, I think this is a terrible deal, but if it, there again, it depends upon, you know, always, how much does it cost and who's paying for it.
And what it's gonna affect, if it's a little helpless.
Benef- if it's beneficial.
Right, all right.
Yeah, exactly.
Perfect.
And, oh, on the same district, you said they, oh, the guys are off fixing something else, the contractor right now, they, what's the timeframe on this project?
I wish they don't have that book, um.
We won't hold you to an exact date.
Actually, I'm trying to remember the completion date, um, I think it was, it was December or something.
December first, I believe, is what it was changed.
I think it was December first.
Yeah, we did have it, it changed to December first.
Okay, well, you know, we're coming, give us another week, we're getting close to November first.
Yeah. It'll be November before they're back, is the way it sounds.
What's the ramifications of them not getting done on December first, they, costing them?
It can, yeah.
Well, I mean, like Bruce said, he's driven by and there's beautiful days, which we haven't had a lot of, if they elected to, you know, go to a different project, well, that's their call, but.
Yeah.
I think the completion dates are for some accountability here, so.
Yeah, yeah. I've learned from that business.
I've learned from that business and other businesses, mother nature has a precedence with the judge.
Oh, always.
You're not, you're not gonna win when you go to court in a year like this, they're gonna say, well, how many working days do I have?
And they'll look back at the weather and they're gonna say, well, yeah, this is very unusual circumstances.
But we extended it to December first.
Yes.
I'm just saying, I mean, that's, there's gotta be accountability, I agree, we can't, you know. You might have an ally in bad weather, but they aren't not working because of bad weather, they're working because of.
But they're probably not working 'cause of bad weather that delayed the other project, 'cause they had to get done so they can pave the road before freezes.
Yeah.
That's probably why they're there.
I just wanted to say.
I don't understand, 'cause we had the same discussion with Rash down our landfill because they're way behind. Well, they could have worked on other days, but the thing is they can't work everywhere because of the weather.
You gotta be.
Weather pushing back on every project.
Just, you know, see how this shakes out and if the weather stays good and they get back, get Mike?
I'm defending contractors as well.
Yeah, and I understand the weather thing, you know, but we did give them that, like I said, you gotta.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we just hope next few days or weeks that they're back up and they get up over the hump and get on the top side of that hill.
That they'll move right along.
Oh, I think it'll be amazing how fast they go. We, we got drawn into a court case as witness in Arnold's Park, Iowa, where a contractor went over on his time, um, on a street job and the, the city charged enough liquidated damage that the contractor took him to court. And the court says the client, the owner has the right to actual damages, nothing more. So it was, ended up a fourth of what the city was asking.
I mean, what you could possibly get would be crop damage for next year or something.
Yeah, yeah, there, you could work out some drainage.
But the simple fact that now they all got their crop, most of it harvested.
So it would have been, that's what the judge is gonna say, well, you got one crop you were supposed to lose, now you're losing the next year, so what did you lose?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we just hope they get back in there and make really good progress.
Thank God, thank God.
Yeah, we'll stay.
It'll make my day when I'm going north, looking over there and seeing that thing swinging. 'Cause every time you go by and you see them moved up the field, you know that, well, that's another dozen pipe they're throwing or whatever, they're eight foot at a time, don't make much headway across the section.
No, not at all, so, no, we'll be involved, we'll keep track of it.
What you got there that you're?
From our topic last week on DD two.
This is our cost share?
Yes. We need you to sign that.
Can Carl do it?
No.
We do have, we have the motion, right?
Yeah.
We do have.
We have a.
And where does it get billed?
Well, DD two.
DD two lateral eye or DD two main or?
Lateral eye, is it not?
Yeah, I would say lateral eye.
Just checking.
Okay, do you have anything else? We keeping you awake here or what?
I don't like.
We can't hurt. We're still here. Oh, the FEMA person is coming. Yeah, did we do that?
No, yeah, when is that?
Wednesday, one thirty.
This Wednesday or next Wednesday?
It's coming.
The other thing that I would, um, last week's topic was, uh, the hole over by Gilmore, um.
In a road ditch.
We got ahold of, uh, contractor and hopefully he's going to meet Mr. Nave over there. Gary said he knows exactly where he's at and the contractor said that he would get over there and hopefully when both of them get free time or free day to, to check, so they would have it, more information to us, so.
Okay, good.
That's a good thing.
Did you tell, you know who the contractor is? It's Rick Peterson.
Yep.
And.
Visited with him.
Yep, so did I, and he's gonna wrap up his harvesting and hopefully the weather stays good for everything.
He's got a long reach over there, but he didn't, wasn't sure if he'd need it over there, but he just wanted to make sure before he opened something up if he needs the long reach to be able to have it, so he doesn't open it and it sets open. Which reminds me of the Thor Blacktop, I went by there yesterday and that's still, we may need to jingle. Badger, see if we can badger him.
Sure.
When is the road closed, do you know?
The road?
The Thor Blacktop there to redo the.
Patch?
Box.
Oh, we don't know.
Oh, yeah.
The contractor is gonna make a call here this next week whether he's gonna go to Weaver or South Thor, depending on his forecast.
Might, might.
It's gonna be closed for a couple of weeks.
I know.
Yeah, I'm kinda hoping he goes to Weaver.
I hope so too, 'cause that's gonna really put a lot of pressure on.
Yeah.
Put it over to the Thor Blacktop.
Yeah, I mean, that, that road is semi after semi after semi going through there right now.
Well, they're either going to Eagle Grove or they're going, cutting across Fort Dodge, 'cause that's the only way they can get to Fort Dodge. Anything over that direction that's going to Valero or Cargill is going through Thor.
Yeah, that's a busy road.
You look for white circles, DOT, that's where they're at, it's in the Thor area.
Oh.
Cause all the truck drivers.
Cause they're going through there so much.
Well, they're also pouring Highway seventeen, I think currently, so as soon as they get that done, that'll be.
Little time will be a lot better.
Every day we have Sunny that gets another combine loaded something to the elevator and hopefully another load of concrete to our.
Fresh, what, is that, when, this Wednesday, the twenty-four? Yeah.
One thirty.
One thirty?
He'll be here in four minutes.
And that, what, what all, or what's the guy we contracted with, he's gonna be there?
Phil, you wanna Phil?
Phil. And then what else, what else are they gonna talk about?
Just the reports I need to do and.
Does Ben know that? Does Ben that?
I don't know, this is a dream.
Well, I, I wondered, but I didn't know.
It's at one thirty? Yep.
Because it's.
Yeah, you don't wanna go to fertile.
I'd rather in here if you need that.
Be back at four o'clock.
But it's just drainage, so don't worry about it. All right, perfect.
Got it. One thirty, this Wednesday.
All right.
Excellent.
I move we adjourn.
Huh, are we ready?
I think we gotta go out of drainage first.
We gotta go out of drainage.
I'm making motion, go out of drainage.
I second that. Well, go, Carl can second that.
And third, they're all getting into the, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, we're out of drainage.
Now is my mo- motion in order?
No, I'll take, accept it.
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In a second, you have the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Nine fifty, we are out at nine fifty, eight AM.